Order the study session for the city of Terry Hills Village. It's Tuesday, August 16th, 2022. On this study session, it's 5:30. In this study session, we're going to talk about the master plan update. And we have, I think, master plan or planning manager, Workman. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. First off, thank you all for allowing me to postpone this a couple of weeks to deal with some family stuff. I really just sincerely appreciate that. So the study session tonight's intended to provide an update to you all in terms of the status of our master plan project. Myself and our consultant Brett Palmberg from Rick Engineering will do as we've done before and kind of tag team the presentation. This is intended to be pretty conversational. So if you have questions or thoughts or things as we get there, don't feel obligated to wait till the end. And likewise, obviously with a with a study session item, there's no action or formal action for you all to take tonight. Really, this is just to tell you where we're at in the process, the progress that's been made. What we're really looking for is feedback from you related to the overall kind of where we're headed. I would say if there are fatal flaws you see, then tonight is the night for you to communicate that with us so that we can then respond appropriately. Although I don't think we'll have that, but if we do, we can always have that conversation. So the last time you all received an update on this project was back in January of this year. This is the graphic for the the project schedule. The green bar on the left is where we started the project. The yellow bar is where we were when we came before you in January of this year. Since then, we've had another open house, a full another round of community input, several C A T meetings. And we're at the point now where we are starting to take the document from a truly mostly draft form into an actual plan format form. And before we get too far down that road, we wanted to check in with you all, give you the update and and make sure that there were there were no fatal flaws. So to that point, some community input to date. As we've talked about throughout the process, there's a variety of ways the Planning and Zoning Commission, who's charged by our charter with updating and maintaining the master plan, has chosen to do community input. One of the ways is to do survey work. If you recall, last fall, we sent out a survey to every home in the village. It was a real broad brush, broad stroke, large kind of policy questions related to the village. We were very happy with those results, and that helped us start to put together some of the big visioning statements and guiding principles and and answer some big questions, things like, is there an appetite for potentially an alternative home style other than a single family detached? The answer to that was no. But that's just kind of an example of some of the questions that were asked at that time. In the spring of this year, we did another community survey that was primarily online, and we were actually pleased with the survey results we got. That one was a little more focused in terms of, okay, we heard this in the first survey. Tell us more about it. Whether that was, you know, undergrounding utilities or clarifying some community vision questions or questions related to transportation. And so that has helped both Planning and Zoning Commission and the C A T move forward to formalizing or articulating drafting some of those goals within each of the chapters. Another way that the Planning and Zoning Commission has decided to get public input is through the open house process. I'm sure you all remember, again, in the fall of last year, we had our first open house, which was really more of a project introduction and asking some of the same broad questions we asked in that first community survey. And then again, in the spring this year, we had another open house, which again was more reflective of the community survey that we had sent out at that time, which was a little slightly narrower in focus. And if one of the one of the additional ways is to have these advisory committees. The first is the Citizen Advisory Task Force. We've had six meetings with that group to date. We've essentially been doing an alternating every other month with them. One month we'll meet with the C A T, and then one month we'll have a study session with the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so that that that's actually worked out really nice where they've been able to give feedback and give us direction and then bounce that off of the C A T. So that's been a real positive for us. The other is the Technical Advisory Group. If you recall, that's a group of folks that are still landowners in the village or stakeholders in the village but aren't residents of the village. So think of like the churches, the schools, water districts, those types of folks that still are an important part of the community but just don't live here. So what has the Planning and Zoning Commission done with all of this? Really, through the public input that we've heard, it's really been important to the Planning and Zoning Commission to use the existing plan from 2008 as a as a blueprint or kind of a guiding document for this master plan update. To say it another way, that it really truly is an update to the existing plan. It's not a throw it in the trash and start over or make 180-degree policy decisions. It's really that that document approved and adopted in 2008 has kind of served its life cycle. How do we refresh it, update it, and look forward for the village? One of the changes that the Planning and Zoning Commission has has made is that in the 2008 plan, there weren't traditional chapters as you think of them. There were more topic areas. And so one of the things that was important to this Planning and Zoning Commission was to formalize the document into chapters. And those chapters are on the right side of your screen here. And you'll see the the red on the left side is what what chapters or discussion items won't be carried forward. And then on the right is two categories that are new chapters that will be in the plan. One thing that the existing plan isn't particularly great at is giving direction in terms of implementation. And then also with that is the timing or the prioritization of certain things. And so it was important to this Planning and Zoning Commission that this document have that. Another thing that the Planning and Zoning Commission has decided is the hierarchy of the chapters within the plan. So there's the overarching plan vision, which is a really broad statement about what we want to be as a community. And then in each of those chapters, there's guiding principles that tie back to that plan vision, the overall plan vision. And then underneath that, there's specific goals that help implement the guiding principles. And then below that is the actions. How do we accomplish those goals? And so part of moving forward, part of the process here and part of this last third, if you will, is identifying those actions and then putting them into that prioritization and actionability, I guess I would call it. And so that's kind of where we're at in the process right now. So to refresh your memory, you saw a version of this back in January. On the left is the existing overarching vision in the 2008 master plan. And on the right is essentially what has been vetted through the public process, through Planning and Zoning Commission, and through the C A T. And you'll see the changes there in red. Again, it speaks to the fact that it's really not a wholesale change of the document. It really is, how do we refresh it and make it usable moving forward for future staff and for future council? With that, I will take a drink of water and let Mr. Palmberg jump in.
Thank you, Paul. So I understand you all have received the draft language. This is essentially the policy meat and potatoes of the document, as I think Paul explained in his memo to you all.
Yeah, and I should mention, too, if for some reason you forgot to bring a packet or didn't have it or whatever, there was extra copies of that provided on the dais for you this evening.
Right, so first one I'm going to talk about is community character. This topic received a lot of input from the C A T and from the community from the first survey and the second survey. So as you can see in your packet here, we have two guiding principles. These have been reviewed with the community at the second open house. We basically at the second open house came back with, we heard from you all, here are some draft guiding principles and gathered input on those guiding principles along with the survey questions, which informed the goals and action items you see here for this section of the plan and for the subsequent sections, which we'll go through here in the coming minutes. So for community character, we had two guiding principles, three draft goals. And within each draft goal, we had four draft action items for the first draft goal. So the guiding principles really spoke to, again, many common areas of character like streetscapes, trails, and open spaces. And importantly, tying back to the to the community vision, which Paul mentioned, emphasize a pastoral, safe, and serene and open character. And then also importantly, the second guiding principle alludes to the balance between private property rights and efforts to really promote the desired character of the community. And so if you look back at the previous master plan of 2009, there are some of these elements that are going to carry through to this current plan in this section and also the following sections. So the first draft goal concerns that pastoral, safe, serene, and open character of the village, and there's action items that follow. Second draft goal concerns preserving the safe, serene, and open character of the village through design and maintenance of streetscapes, public lands, and public facilities. And the third draft goal concerns preserving key wildlife corridor and habitat in the village and designing trails and plantings accordingly to promote the viability of corridors and wildlife habitat. So that third one, the emphasis on wildlife came through really the input of the first survey. There was a lot of input from that survey and also from C A T members to really emphasize wildlife and habitat as an element of community character. So with that, without going into all the reading of the use, I think it was to open up for comments from you all.
The only thing I would also add is, at our last C A T meeting on July 27th, we shared this the same language with them, and they had a very robust conversation in the best way possible about refining this language. So this language certainly is not final. We are still working through that, and we're going to continue to work through that with Planning and Zoning Commission and the C A T. But like I said, we want to make sure that you all have the opportunity to see it. What we don't want to have happen is, okay, here's the final document, right? Let us know your thoughts, right? So so again, if you have comments, great. If not, we can we can continue to motor through this. You let us know what works best for you guys.
I'll also add, Paul, the C A T mentioned with regard to community character, they wanted to see mention of safety and crime woven in here. So we're still kind of working through that input from the C A T, but there was a pretty robust discussion concerning safety and crime and perception of crime and so forth in the village.
Just basic question, who actually wrote this? Was it drafted by?
I don't know. Do you like it?
That's a loaded question.
Jay would like to take credit. If you don't like it, if you do like it, it was Brit and myself. It's 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 been kind of a anytime you do these, there's not necessarily one point of authorship, right? We start with kind of a thought that somebody puts on the paper, and then Britt and I will bounce ideas off of each other. Chris will weigh in. If it's a certain topic, maybe Jay or Emily or somebody else from staff will weigh in. But I wouldn't say there's necessarily one person that would be the author. But finally, ultimately, the language would go through the C A T and the Planning and Zoning Commission.
We also get written edits, red lines, and additions and subtractions from P and Z members directly and C A T members directly. So if you were ever to look at a track change document from beginning to end, oh my lord, it would be indecipherable just because there's so many different inputs on the language itself.
Right, so someone starts the process with initial draft. You have to start somewhere. It's myself or Paul, and then we bounce it internally. Then we've bounced it off the C A T and the P and Z as we've gone through this really the last, what, four months or so?
Yeah, several months, yeah.
So again, we're just kind of looking for fatal flaws tonight. If you don't have any comments on this particular section, we can move along.
Yeah, we're not saying you have to have them.
I guess I just want to understand the context of, how does something make the cut? How did wildlife make the cut to, you know? And at what point do you put it in as as a action or a goal? And at what point did you say, no, then we're done? You know, what was that process like?
I would say that the first survey in particular, we wouldn't say we data mined, but we analyzed all the written comments, all the numerical comments, all the quantitative data that came in pretty robustly. There was actually a real huge amount of just written comments that kind of went over various topics, in particular on community character. And so we actually went through and analyzed how many times wildlife is mentioned by particular people, how many counts of that. And so we kind of identified those kind of threads of main things that came out of the survey in the first open house and discussed that with the P and Z and the C A T. So we identified to them, here's the main takeaways we saw that are kind of informing some of the action items here, got their buy-in, then proceeded on to draft language.
Yeah, I would say that's why the casting that wide net in the first survey was was particularly important, because then that kind of allowed Brit and his team to do some of that analysis that he's talking about. And then we go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and say, hey, this is, these are some observations that we made, and here's kind of some of our thoughts. And then C A T and ultimately Planning and Zoning Commission say, yeah, we agree, that's important enough that we should have something about it. What that something is, we don't know yet. But that's why we have continued meeting, those continual meetings is, we think we want something. And so then we say, okay, here's what we think you might be interested in in talking about. And they say, yeah, we like that, or we like that, but, or no, that's not what we meant. Let's try and revise it. And so a lot of it's really born out of that public comment period and then sort of sifting through it with the Planning and Zoning Commission and making some some professional recommendations and then Planning and Zoning Commission ultimately saying what they agree with or what they don't agree with.
And by the way, the 760 surveys for the first round, I mean, there was obviously city staff time put to sending those out and expense in terms of mailing them out as well, but that kind of response rate for the size of community was outstanding. At least, I think all of us agree on that.
Yeah.
Yes.
As as we progress through this process, there are terms, for example, I could take wildlife. Wildlife may mean one thing to me, and it may mean something else to somebody else. Gosh, you know, no, we don't need any any cougars, I'll eat my small dog, you know, or or foxes or wolves or whatever it might be. How how do we expect to move this to something where, you know, it's really operationalizable? I'm not sure that's a word, but, you know, it's something that that gets beyond a generality that could be interpreted in many different ways.
Well, I think the answer to that, and it kind of harkens back to our last C A T meeting, is to have definitions within the document. That's something that planners regularly do as part of these exercises to define what we mean by wildlife, things like that. It's a good one to bring up that actually has not been raised as one need a definition. So that's helpful input. The last C A T meeting, there was sort of an aha moment when, you know, there were a lot of people in the first survey expressed a lot of desire for dark skies this, dark skies that. And there's a sense from that C A T meeting of just last month that people may think dark skies means just keeping it dark, whereas the term dark dark skies internationally and commonly in practice is defined as limiting light pollution that's going up in the sky, right?
Yeah, and and I will say, and I'm going to look a little bit at Earl as as the champion, is of, it's really important to this Planning and Zoning Commission that this document be operational, that that there are clear action items and clear timeframes for action items. Not to say that it's so rigid that it can't be flexible and responsive, but one thing that's important to P and Z is to make sure that we, when we end this project, we have a document that helps give real good, clear guidance to future staff, Planning and Zoning Commission, and council. And I think one of the ways that we'll be able to do that is through the addition of the implementation and prioritization chapter and then some of these definitions to really give some meaning to, when we use words in the master plan document, what do we mean by that?
And some of these words in here, you know, you're seeing the version from the last C A T meeting. We still have edits we're bringing in. But there's certain words, again, looking at Earl there, words like explore, you know, people want to get to more actionable verbs. So the words you use, the verb choice, or so on and so forth, that actually helps a lot in terms of making a plan operable or operable or successful, yeah.
No fatal flaws, number one.
Okay.
The next chapter in the document will be land use.
Hang on a second, I'm sorry. I was trying to get my thoughts together there. I guess under community character, that is where this master plan is going to house anything regarding public safety, safety of the community, crime?
No, not specifically.
Okay. There may be elements of that in here. Any of the other five headline topics that are in here. So are these the are these? Is community character, land use, parks and trails, transportation, and infrastructure, sustainability, are these seven implementation? Are they topics for tonight's agenda? I'm sorry if I'm maybe a bit behind here. I'm trying to understand. Are these six or seven items in here? Are they the content of what the big headers are going to be in the master plan?
They'll be the individual chapters.
Chapters, if you will. Okay. So where in which chapter would crime and safety issues be generally housed?
I I don't think there's going to be one specific one. I think that that's one of those topics we're probably going to see throughout the document. One thing I would I would say, just frankly, is that was part of the discussion that we had with the C A T at the last meeting on July 27th, is they identified that there is opportunity for more discussion of crime and safety and some things like that throughout the document. I will say this is a chapter where that came up fairly frequently. And so that's been one of our charges coming out of that meeting is to is to come up with some options and some language and what we think they mean by that in order for the Planning and Zoning Commission to chew on and then ultimately to present back to the C A T.
Okay.
So I think your comment's well taken, and it's very timely. If there's if there's things that you'd like to see, or if there's areas within the plan you think it may be more appropriate, we would love to have that feedback so we can incorporate it. And and now is actually a great time to do that.
Yeah, I I mean, Brit and Paul, your whole team, you guys have done a great job on where we are, you know, right now on this. And I see no fatal flaws either. I don't think I'd be shocked if any of us did. I do think that if I recall, the survey work that came back that we saw and a lot of the stuff that we saw at the open houses, so much of it was about crime and safety, my recollection. And I I know you touch on it here under chapter one, community character, but I think it probably warrants a little bit more of a deep dive if if whether in this chapter or in this chapter and others. I would just, I think, and I don't know what the answers are, right, Commander Weathers? We don't know what the what we're going to do about crime and safety. We hopefully implement some new things and be more vigilant. But I do think that if we're going to make this a practical document, as you you suggested with Earl, something that future councils and future appointed bodies and whatnot can can really use as a guiding principle, we really should be focusing on what we heard almost was the number one topic. Is that is that right?
It was certainly one of the most popular, absolutely.
All right, I think we just need to hammer home a little bit more on that topic.
And I I appreciate that that broad comment, not only because it's accurate, but two is, that's the kind of feedback, sometimes Brit and I are so in the weeds on this type of thing, that sometimes it's helpful for those that haven't been in the weeds to take a fresh look at it and say, well, I remember hearing this, and we need to, you know, consider something a little more detailed or something a little more in depth. And so this is absolutely the perfect time to make that. And I also want to add, if you have a stroke of genius in the middle of the night, this isn't your only opportunity, right? You can always send me red lines, you can always give me a call, we can set up time, all that kind of stuff. But no, I think your comment is well made, and it's certainly something that we've got some marching orders to to continue to put some language in.
Okay, great. That's all I've got for this first chapter.
I could have a comment, too. I actually second Dan's comment, but also, just some of the language here to discuss with city council, I fact that. I mean, this has to be a document basically that we need to say, you got to tell, you know, this is, city council's going to take this up. And, you know, give us a document at the end of the day that we we approve and is going to say, do these things. Preserve trees, you know, increase increase accessibility of bike lanes. I mean, you know, tell us what to do, but discuss with, I've never seen that in the master plan. That's not, you know, what we want to do. We want the, you, you know, I want to have guidance so that the next council can take up the master plan and say, here's what we need to do. We need to work on our line canal. I mean, we need to work improving trails, we need to work on this. That it should be in that kind of a format, is all I'm saying, rather than just discuss with somebody or consider it or do something like that. Lay it out and say, we value, this is what we value. We value trails, we value connectivity, we connect the trails together, underground all the utilities. That's what we, that's what council can then understand and say, okay, we're going to do that, and we're going to take an action to do that. So I would kind of, it's not fatal flaw, but it's editing, editing. So the intent here is very clear, very concise, here's what we're going to do. You know, here's what our values are, and here's what we want council to focus on in the next 10 years until this thing is renewed. That's my one thought. The other thought I had, it would be useful, I don't know if anybody's done this, but taking the, is is this so far removed from the 2008 that you can't even do a side by side comparison, a red line? Probably not, I suppose. I don't know if you can. Or if not, at least do just the big changes, so we could say, or the big keeps. So this has been kept from 2008, right? We haven't touched this, so nobody needs to just think about that because that's a mistake. Here's the new stuff here. I mean, just give us a heads up, you know, here's what we really talked about, and here's what we really, you know, didn't, you know, was missing from the 2008 plan, things have changed. That would be useful to me to kind of understand where we're going. I don't know if that's possible or, like I said, you're probably too far away from redlining in 2008, that'll never happen, but.
No, but there's.
There's certainly opportunity to broad brush, big picture, ideas, concepts. We absolutely can almost do a side by side. We it we won't be able to probably do a red line, you know, comparison at a line by line level, but we absolutely.
Because I was thinking about the the cut through traffic and stuff. That was all very specific. I'd like to know where that's been changed or if everybody, you know, that's what we want to do. I mean, that's a big issue to me.
I was going to say very similar. I was going to say, sorry, I lost my train of thought now. Comparing comparisons. Oh, yes, is that, yes, the the documents are going to be structured very differently, but some of the same themes and some of the same things that are important on those different topics that are now chapters, we could, we could do that pretty easily.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, we're all in agreement, not red line, line by line, but there are a lot of elements of the old plan which are carrying through, which is a good segue to the land use chapter because I think the paradigm of land use is remaining largely the same.
Yeah. But I don't want to. I don't want to skip forward if there's other, this is good, good comments.
I have one one question, maybe, Mayor, for you about your first comment about be more concise about what we're asking for or what we're demanding or shooting for out of this. I guess now for you guys, is this, is this, these are talking points that we're working through right now, you're going to rewrite, for instance, the draft goal, number one under community character, preserving the pastoral, safe, serene, so on and so forth of the private property. Is this a summary of these four items, or is this what, is this really the what you envisioned being the first sentence of each? I I didn't envision that this was what you, you're making it sound, Russell, like like these are what it's going to it's gonna say in there. I think these are gonna be, these are things to discuss with us right now, and then they do hammer in and hone in on them. I guess I was a little misunderstanding that, thinking that these items are going to be far more clearly defined, and be more pointed at a task, whether it's undergrounding, or, you know, making the trails safe, or bicycle connectivity, or whatever it is, not review, reevaluate, review, and discuss, that's how you start these four topics. So, just can you explain what your thought process is there?
Sure, so, the actions will definitely be more specific and more direct, right? Those are things to accomplish.
Okay.
The overall plan vision is, what do we value as a community, right? And then, within each chapter, the guiding principles of that chapter is, how is this chapter gonna tie to that overall planned vision, right? So those will be fairly aspirational, fairly broad, not, you're not gonna get a lot of argument, or people that don't want to preserve or enhance, or that kind of stuff. Then the goal level is, what goals are identified in order to achieve those guiding principles that tie to that master vision. And then those actions are, what direction can we give future staff, future council, future planning and zoning commission, to implement that goal, that's trying to implement that, those guiding principles, that is implementing the planned vision. So there's gonna be different layers, and so some of those middle layers are gonna be a little more aspirational and, and broad brush, but those actions, at least some of the actions, will be more specific, more concise, more direct. I will say that there are some times where it would be appropriate to have it be more open.
Squishy.
Right? We don't want to tie a future council's hands to subject X, right? Or we don't want to say we're gonna do this, when we, we don't want to say we're gonna underground everything, when we know that's a $20 million undertaking, that is not gonna be achieved in year one, right? And so there are gonna be some, that are gonna be a little more soft, I guess I would call it, but there will also be some that are more directive of, this is specifically what we're saying we need to do, in order to implement this goal, it's implementing the guiding principle.
Okay.
I do think, my hope, my hope for the outcome of this project was more or less a to-do list, in prioritized order. And so, I think even in those middle, to borrow the one that Russell picked, discuss with city council more restrictive tree preservation ordinance, well, you know, I think you really, it, it would seem to me that the outcome of the process you've gone through would say, we need a more restrictive tree, you know, tree ordinance, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but that goes with bucolic and semi-rural and serene and all of that. So I would, I would, you know, not hedge the bet, be direct, because I think, you know, we've gone through the process in a remote way with you, and, and you've gone through it in depth, but, you know, think three years down the road, when really there'll be, I think, six new people in these chairs at that point in time, well, seven, really. So, you know, we, to leave a legacy, you know, I think it should be somewhat, not too vague, and maybe a little more directive.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just jump in on that real quick, two seconds. Overall, I think the action items are the place to have that specificity, and that clear direction. But that's a great example, that specific one that you mentioned, about the trees. Sometimes the, the plan should not put council in an unwinnable position, because there are other factors, other than just community desires, that go into that decision. There's the legal basis, there's property rights, there's, there's, there's a whole variety of issues that are associated with that. And so, we don't want to put the plan in the hole, if you will, or sort of almost guaranteed to fail, before we've even got started. So some of those, by definition, are not gonna be as direct action items as others. I do want council to know though, our Planning and Zoning Commission, this is, we do not have a meeting where this topic is not discussed robustly. They are fully aware, and your champion of this topic is sitting here tonight. It should not go without proper appreciation. This is the biggest topic for Commissioner Holland, and I would offer to you that, when there is the right opportunity and the good environment for that direct action, it will be there. There just might be a few circumstances where it's more difficult for it to be that direct.
Well, and that's just wordsmithing, I mean, you need to say, when feasible, then, you know, or to, you know, for trees, you know, to the extent feasible, you know, increase, you know, preserve trees around, or utilities, but utility undergrounding, yeah, I know, it's not gonna happen next year, but you can still put it in there, and then council has to figure out how to do it. I wouldn't tell them, you know, you know, as an action item, go, you know, do this, or, you know, go to this, or do that, or do that, because we, who knows, right? You can't, but, but just the, just the goal of getting them undergrounded is, you know, is all we need, you know, all council needs to, make them figure out how they're gonna do it, is what my suggestion.
Agreed.
But it's gonna be different for everything, obviously. But a lot of it's wordsmithing about, you know, you need to hedge your bets when things may not be legally possible, and you just say, hey, you just, you just do your best.
And I might just say, since you guys brought it up, Paul could tell you, discuss was thrown out almost immediately.
He did.
Get, promote, or adopt.
Pursue.
Which align with the mayor's view of it.
Yeah, agreed.
Yeah, you're seeing the version pre.
Well, and again, I don't, I don't mean to limit the, that comment to trees, you know, it's, it's that clarity of direction. If you're gonna err one way or the other, you know, I would try to be clearer, and let the next council figure out, you know, things will change, the environment will change, so decisions and priorities will have to change to some degree, but I think the better direction that you can give them, the clearer it is, the more valuable the outcome.
It is a high, it is a high-level document, the plan, it is, and it's not anything that anybody can sue over or anything like that, because it's, that's not its purpose, its purpose is to set the broad goals, but, you know, if you feel like you're getting down in the weeds too much, then just take it out, because that's not its purpose, you shouldn't, it shouldn't be, shouldn't be doing that kind of work, that's not, that's not his job. So, my view. All right.
No, great discussion, thank you. So the next chapter is land use. Again, I'm not gonna go through and read this verbatim, but it was pretty clear in the first round of community input, that, that the predominant land use in the village should remain single-family detached, and there was a lot of feedback that, that, that is a desire of this community. And so, this is one of those, Mr. Mayor, where there probably is a strong opportunity to say, this is what it said in 2008, and it really, the intent of it really hasn't changed. It's formatted a little differently, and it may say it a little differently, but really what we're saying is, this is who we are, and this is what we want to be. So within there, there are two draft goals, again, to maintain the existing land use development patterns in the village, and to protect some, protect the floodplain areas in the village. And then within those, there's some draft actions, and you'll see those are mostly related to making sure that we adopt and enforce code that, that help achieve that guiding principle of a predominantly single-family detached residential community. So with that, I will take a breath and see if, yes, sir?
It's a really small point, but the, under the second goal, first action, I think I had to read that sentence about four times, five times.
You are not alone in that.
Too many knots in there, but, but, you know, I think there's probably a simpler way to say what you intend.
Yeah, and just for some context, yes, we, that was another point that the C A T had a, had a good discussion about, and yes, there's some wordsmithing that needs to be done with that one. The real intent is, how do we, how do we not set up council staff, future property owners for failure by creating lots that are entirely covered by the floodplain, and have to go through that, that process?
That was about the fifth time through.
Okay, we'll move on to parks, trails, and open space. This chapter has three guiding principles, which I, again, will not read for you verbatim, and we have seven draft actions for goal number one, which pertains to maintaining and improving the current system of village-owned parks, trails, and open space. Five draft actions for goal number two, which relates to the preservation enhancement of the system of trails and sidewalks around the village. And the third goal concerns preserving Quincy Farm for current and future enjoyment education of residents, and we have three draft action items for that one. So, you know, in large part, the input we heard from the community, a lot of it was consistent with the, with the old plan of 2008, 2009, which was, look for opportunities to expand and improve park areas in the village, that actually was written in the last plan, and a lot of discussion about improving the trails. The details of the action items are informed more by the input here of this master plan effort. I will note that the C A T mentioned with regard to the draft actions under the first goal, to have a little more language connecting this part with the High Line Canal and planning for that. We do mention the High Line in the draft actions under the second goal concerning system of trails and sidewalks, and of course, the third goal concerns Quincy Farm specifically. And when we started this process, I think we all thought we might have a little more detail integration with those planning efforts. In the end, though, we are alluding more to tying those other planning efforts in, the city's currently doing a detailed engineering study for the High Line, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And the planning for Quincy Farm continues, so we're making sure there's bridges built between those efforts and the master plan effort, but we are not, pardon the pun, for the trails, in the weeds on those.
We want to be able to see the forest for the trees, is what you're saying.
Yes, not a good pun.
I'm wondering about the draft goal number three, and if we won't be looking back in just a few short years and saying, well, we checked that box entirely, like, I know that when we look at the 2008, was it eight or nine, the old plan, eight, we had Village Center, right? Promote and construct and finance and get the Village Center done, and we checked that box halfway through the 2008 to 2022 timeframe, roughly, or 60% the way through. I'm wondering if, does this look like an antiquated goal in three years? If it's, if it were done, and I don't know that it is done in three years, and I don't know if it's ever done, right? It might be an ongoing continual improvement and effort that the city partners with the land preserve to continue to improve, but it's, it's different, we don't have the High Line Canal stormwater plan on here, Britt, that you mentioned a moment ago, listed as a specific goal. It's located within a goal, but we do have Quincy Farm, I just, I'm not opposed to it, I just wonder if, couple, three, four years from now, if somebody's gonna start looking at this thing in the future, if this is really live document for 10 years, maybe 15, right? We don't know when the next master plan will be done, some cities go 20 years before they update their master plans. Is this gonna be an old antiquated line item? I just want to throw that out there, and it, maybe, maybe the answer is, yes, it will be old and antiquated, and it, and no, it doesn't matter, and that's okay. I just think it, I think it's a little, I think it's worthy of discussion, is all.
Yeah, it feels like, I think you're right. Ultimately, I would guess that that kind of becomes just another park, you know, and, and fits in under what we want to do in a broader sense. It does seem to me though, now, that, that, you know, there's so much rehab that has to be done to facilities, or decisions that need to be made. You know, I think the land preserve's doing a great job of trying to get some traction on programming and fundraising and stuff like that, but I feel like we're kind of in a nascent stage for this. So, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't trouble me too much that this is kind of elevated in visibility at this moment in time, and yeah, ultimately, like the, like the city centers, you know, we check the box, move on, and it'll be dropped out next round, or something like that, might be, might be the way it plays out.
The other thing is, it may take 10 years to get this thing done, we don't know. So I think it's worthwhile leaving it in as a goal, whether it's met in three years, like, and he said, just check it off.
Like I said, I'm not opposed to it, I just do, I think that eventually this will be, we don't have any other specific goals under this, you know, P T R C header, specific goals, at least, you know, there are some sub-goals, I guess, under the, under the other sidewalks and trails and parks, but I'm okay leaving it in, I just wanted to see if anyone else had any thoughts on it.
Yeah, I'd say, given the stops and starts of Quincy Farm's history, keep it in.
Okay.
A question on trails and sidewalks and that sort of thing. I, I think there's a couple of different ways one can play that. One can be kind of reactive, like, a situation develops and we react to it. Or one can be more proactive, and say, okay, here's the trail system, here's where we have some problem areas, let's come up with plans to remedy those problem areas, you know, whatever they may be, whether it's connectivity, or, you know, we, whatever it may be. So I wonder, what's, what's contemplated here? Because I, I think you want to flavor this one way or the other, you know, it feels to me. And I'm, you know, when I see something, I identify gaps, yeah, okay, I can get that, and secure funding, that, that sounds sort of proactive. I don't know, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm not quite getting the, we want to have a great trail system, we want to go ahead and, and identify our problem areas, build it out, you know, that sort of thing. I've heard people say, you know, we only lose trails because people want us to vacate a ride or something, but we never gain them, and it, you know, are, are we intending to get out of that, into a real proactive mindset?
So, what, what I would offer is, and I'm not sure that this 100% answers your question, but this version is a draft bullet point outline, if you will. What's missing from this is the narrative that gives these things context. And so, as part of, right, you're not gonna just open up the document and see parks, trails, and open space, and it immediately jumps into this. You'll see narrative and discussion language that says, you know, we value our parks, we value our trails, we value our open space, they're what make us unique, they're what make us special, right? We want to make sure that we do everything we can to keep them and enhance them in the best ways possible. So you, I don't, again, I don't know if that 100% answers your question, but some of that background narrative will help give some context, and help explain what the desires in a more broad stroke of the community are. Does that, does that help?
Yeah, I think your comments are helpful, you know, the draft goal here, number two, preserve and enhance system of trails and sidewalks, been feasible. To your point, it's not like, we're not coming out and saying, in this, in what you're reading right here, we're gonna build out a system of trails and sidewalks. So, that kind of feedback from you all, that can help us with the wordsmithing and that narrative upfront. Because if, you know, that's, that's the kind of topic for discussion with you all, with a P and Z, with a C A T, in terms of how demonstrative the language is in the run-up to this stuff, I think it's important. I agree.
My thought about this issue too, just getting, is, is a minor thing, but include safety in here, and safety on the trails, there's no kind of language about safety on the trails, so I'm thinking, and I'm thinking that, if you have, you know, maintain safe trails, that allows us to look at the speed limits on High Line Canal and things like that, it also allow us to look at, the councils to look at the crossings on our own crossings, not only like C dot crossings, but crossings of the High Line Canal at Cara Boulevard, Quincy, those kinds of things. So wherever there's, you know, safety issues in the trails, I think that's probably something a master plan ought to, ought to mention.
Yeah, and I agree, and that goes back to, I think safety's gonna be throughout the document, and one of the things that we've heard in this last round of, kind of, of getting input is, we need to, we need to put some more language in related to that.
Just, I think you're appropriate to.
And I agree with you, I agree with you.
One of, one of the things that also kind of troubles me from a practical perspective is, you know, we, we have kind of mixed modes, in a sense, on the trails. I mean, we've separated bikes and people from cars, but, and horses as well, you know, but, but we have still conflicts, they're, they're not with cars, but it's people and fast bikes, people and e-bikes, you know, horses spooked by e- you know, horses spooked by e-bikes or whatever it may be. And I, I, I mean, it's an evolutionary process, but I wonder if somewhere we should at least address or come up with some kind of plan to start to address the conflicts that exist today if we want to have a high-quality trail system.
And my response would be, it's again pertaining to the language, was builds up to all these statements. We used to have discussions myself with F H U the other day about these conflicts and how we really speak to that in the plan beyond just these action items, right? So that's something that we'll want to bring through in the language.
And I agree. And while I don't know that it necessarily gets into the detail that you may be looking for, in the transportation section, we do have some more additional guidance or some more additional direction about helping to improve kind of safety on the trails. Is there an opportunity may, maybe there to talk about, you know, bike and bike conflicts, right? Whether you're an off-roader or a casual, you know, Sunday afternoon, right? Perhaps, yes, there are. But I, I think we've, we've teased some of that, but again, that's why we want to get in front of you guys, is to get this kind of feedback so that we can make sure we incorporate it.
Yeah, I mean, I was, I was out of town this past weekend, and they actually had a situation where you've got a road for the pedestrians, you've got cordoned off, it had some fencing area for bikes, wide enough for two lanes, and then there was the sidewalk and the people could walk on that. I don't suggest that's something we're ready to do, but, but, you know, this whole business of friction on the trails, I think is certainly something I've heard about from people and experienced personally. So it's, it may be something that you want to, you want to address. And not all in one fell swoop, but how can we evolve, you know, and improve?
A quick question for Commander. What are the three E's? It was education, enforcement, and what's the third one?
Oh, no, you got me. Education, enforcement, and.
Entrapment.
Entrapment.
But, 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 those, those words are so powerful, you know, and, and I don't know, you build them in, but, because they work, you know, and it addresses exactly the safety issue.
And that can come under transportation.
Enforcement, education, and. I'm old.
All right, we have about 10 more minutes, if you want to, I'd like to.
I was going to say, are there, are there topics that council wants to make sure we get to? I would say let's do that first.
My first comment, and I was looking over transportation, as far as calming, we've always treated it as a reaction. Somebody will come in and complain, then we react. And I think if you, it's, under number, draft goal, number one, under transportation, you've got calming in there. I think that needs to be a separate draft goal, so we do something proactively, looking at what we can do instead of sitting back, waiting until somebody comes in and says, you know, it's something, and I think the Citizens Advisory Committee also talked about that. So my question is, can we add something and make it merely, instead of a footnote there, be a proactive thing as far as pursuing calming? That's my one comment.
Yeah, that's not a problem for us. Again, we're still in the draft phase, so absolutely.
I'd like to see under transportation, I think as big of an issue as identifying Quincy Farm, because it's our, you know, it's, it's a big legacy project and property and whatnot, I think under transportation, this Bellevue and I-25 interchange warrants possibly its own section in transportation. And specifically, I don't know how, it may all be resolved by the damn, by the time the, this, this document is adopted, but it certainly won't be built anytime soon, right? It'll be built halfway through this, you know, this, this plan being in place. But I do think that, you know, we happen to find ourselves in a spot where we've got one ally that we know of in Denver fighting for the Spooey as opposed to the split diamond. That is what your, what your draft goal number one is about, right? Sorry, not draft goal number one. It's, yeah, draft action on number one, under goal number one, is coordinating with C dot neighboring jurisdictions to optimize improvements for traffic along state routes within or adjacent to the village. I mean, this is a big topic, and I think it warrants being in here, specifically warrants that particular improvement being in here. I don't know how, I'll leave that to you guys to figure out how to incorporate it in, but I will continue to remain kind of on the record that that, if we end up with that split diamond, union is going to become a thoroughfare for cut-through traffic, and it's going to have people rolling from Lakewood through Cherry Hills Village into the tech center, right up and down Quincy, way more so than I think we're seeing now. So that, that's my comment.
Dan, if we do that, do we want, also, I had in there Hampton, I don't, the mayor's involved in that Hampton study, and that causes a major cut-through on Cara Boulevard. They talk about widening that at some point, but do you want to be specific on that or just?
Well, at least, I don't know what the options are on Hampton. I don't know much about that one. I don't know that we have, I mean, right now, there's two options that have been really studied now by C dot and all the, all the parties, and maybe I'm sitting here on an island on this topic, folks, but I think we at least need to identify.
No, I think, I think you worded it in such a way as say, you know, oppose union, using Union Street as an off-ramp for I-25.
As an on and off-ramp.
We have a history in the village of, we opposed Quincy, you know, that we killed Quincy off-ramp. I think you use the same language, Union. You could also say enhancing Hampton's lane, lane numbers. I mean, they're talking about increasing lanes on Hampton, because Hampton goes three-two, three-two, like that, right? So, but yeah, simply, and that's, this is from the old 2008 plan, too, right? It was ensure the better, better, better transportation along the arterials on our edges of our city so that we don't have as much cut-through traffic. I think that's the, that's why Bellevue improvement, we're, we're support Spooey because that would improve the traffic on Bellevue as well, and that would help everybody, so.
That's, that's my comment on transportation.
I would encourage, I feel like I wouldn't be doing my job relative to Dr. Cog if I didn't encourage you to take a specific look at greenhouse gas in here. Greenhouse gas, you can't see it, you can't feel it, touch it, whatever, but we have among the primary air quality, poor air quality and certain measures of greenhouse gases in the Denver and Colorado area, countrywide and even internationally. So there's a lot of work being done at the Dr. Cog level to try and make sure that we are taking actions as, as a region to reduce greenhouse gases. They're not legislative, they can't direct, but at the same time, I think we have some stake in that, you know, having a bunch of cars queued up spewing exhaust or something like that, you know, is not going to be helpful. So, and there, there are plenty of things we could do. So I think I would encourage you to visit that topic.
Randy, if you look at sustainability and resiliency, they do talk about some of that. We're talking about draft goal one, reducing environmental footprint, the city's operations services. So I think, is that where you'd put it?
Well, you could. I mean, it's almost a topic all by itself, in a sense, in that there are federal goals, there's withholding of, of grant monies, all of that, if we don't meet those goals. Plus, it's a quality of life issue. Just because I can't see it and smell it and touch it, you know, it, it's not, it's harmful.
I'm going to have to use my prerogative and wrap this up unless there's something really need to do. I think this has been great, great presentation. Obviously, all the council members can get back, you know, give your comments and additional comments you might have to Paul. This is a process, we have a public hearing on this, too, right? Even continuing, so this is not the last word, so please.
But do, if you have issues or if you want to talk, please reach out. I'm more than happy to sit with you, and we can always have a conversation.
I'm going to take a prerogative and have a recess. We'll reconvene here in three minutes.
Thank you all for that discussion. I appreciate, it's very helpful for us, so thank you.
Got my little outpost of freedom here.
All right, I have 6:30. I'm calling to order the regular meeting of the Cherry Hills Village City Council. Today is Tuesday, August 16th, 2022. We will have called order now, a roll call of members, please.
Counselor Safavi is absent. Counselor Will?
Happy to be here.
Counselor Brown is absent. Counselor Gallagher?
Here.
Counselor Sheldon?
Here.
Counselor Blum?
Here.
If you could stand, please, for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is audience participation. We have one sign up, Jen Difindal. Welcome to Approach.
All right, is this good? Thank you. 5701 East Stanford Drive. Good evening, Mayor Stewart, Councilors, City Manager Kramer, Commander Weathers, and staff. As you all know, my name is Jen Difindal, and I'm officially running for mayor of our city of Cherry Hills Village. It's simple. School safety, mental health, transparent communication, Quincy Farm.
Sorry, Jen.
Mayor, I, pardon me, Ms. Difindal, but I do want to alert council and you to a policy that the city has. It's regarding, it's administrative policy that says the city does not contribute directly or indirectly to any campaign involving the nomination, retention, or election of any person to public office.
Okay.
So by utilizing city facilities and time here, I believe.
So you can't say what you're, like, okay.
Anything that would be contributing to the election of any person for office.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's okay.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is reports from city's commissions or committees. Miss, okay. Consent agenda, item six, is, does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That is approved without objection. Next unfinished business, resolution 19, series 2022, approving a ballot issue to be submitted to the voters at the Arapahoe County Coordinated Election to be held November 8th, 2022, to amend the city's sales tax code to require persons engaged in business in the city to collect city sales tax. City Clerk Gillespie, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart, members of city council. Staff is presenting for council's consideration tonight, a language to place an issue, a taper issue on the ballot. This is a follow-up from the last meeting when this language was discussed, and council provided a direction on the particular language with the addition of, without changing the city's existing 3.5 sales tax rate, which has been added to the draft resolution in the packet. If approved, this will go on the November 8th, 2022 ballot, and staff is happy to answer any questions.
This version, I believe, has the changes that we adopt, we talked, spoke about last time. Any other, any questions then from council? Hearing that? And we just need to, I'll take, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution 19.
I move to approve resolution 19, series 2022, approving the ballot issue to be submitted to the voters at the Arapahoe County Coordinated Election to be held on November 8th, 2022, to amend the city's sales tax code to require persons engaged in business in the city to collect sales tax.
A motion and second. Any discussion, further discussion after we had a long discussion already? If not, I'll take, this is just a voice vote, is that right? All in favor?
Aye.
For you, you missed it, but that was, we just voted yes. We just passed the sales tax language. But welcome.
I read it.
All right, no new business reports. I have a brief one, I think, here. On the third, we had the Metro Mayor's Caucus that I attended, and the focus on that was the, the insurance commissioner was there for Colorado and the, and the state commissioner of, or the state person responsible for emergencies, actions, and spoke to us, and we talked a lot about the Marshall Fire and insurance issues that I can, I'll report some of those. I think I mentioned some of those last time, but I'll report some of those to the community in a future report about how a lot of them, there's only 8% of those homes in that area are, have adequate insurance to rebuild to, you know, in the manner that they, I thought they did. The rest of those are in a pickle. Also attended the next day, the Circle Committee for the Metro Mayor's Caucus, which is talking about lots of environmental things and possible legislation. Also on the fourth was a kickoff meeting for Regional Nine Opioid Governance Committee. So I attended that, that was by Zoom, and they are, you know, collecting lots of ideas about possible uses for this money, for the settlement money that's coming through. Arapahoe County is taking the lead because they had the most, you know, most to expenses from there, but it's, it's basically that, our region is Arapahoe County and Aurora and Centennial, so it's, we're just watching and, you know, they're listening to us, we're not voting members, but they are very appreciative that we were there, and they hope to have us there in the future to talk about, you know, directions and, and ideas for how this settlement money may be used. Basically, anything to do with opioid or medical treatment is going to be fair game for them. Also, let's see, on the 10th of August, we had a mayor's lunch with the mayors of Centennial, Greenwood and Sheridan. We met at Centennial at the Biscuit, New Biscuit Place, it's down by Colorado County Line Road and, and Quebec. And then following that, we all got in the car and drove to C M L, and we had a meeting with C M L and Arvada, the attorneys for Arvada, and our mayors, and also representatives from Littleton. We met with Excel to talk about transparency and the undergrating process. And so they have come forward, because, you know, last- And so they have come forward, because, you know, last year we proposed legislation that would have required open bidding, fair transparency, competitive bidding for all undergrounding projects, and that was approved unanimously by CML, by the board, by the policy committee, also the Metro Mayor's Caucus was on board, but it still stalled. And Excel basically took a step back and said, wait a minute, we'd like to work with you outside of the legislative arena and see what we can do to give you assurances of transparency going forward. So they've developed a series of actually documents that were suggested by the city of Sheridan and I think Arvada as well, and I've provided those to Jay and the city manager. Basically, the beginning of the project saying, here's, here's what it's going to cost, and, and here's, you know, here's, here's the bids. I, again, I indicated that I'd like to see simply the RFPs and the response to the RFPs for their, for their undergrounding projects, because that doesn't make them do a lot of work, and we can see what it is, and that's transparent. That's how we do most of our city projects. I'm not sure if, you know, if they're going to get there. They were, they were taking that back to their people and see, but at least we'll have the first step. The first step is we'll have some documentation at the beginning of the project, what each line items is going to cost, and we aren't just presented with a final bill saying, here's, here's how much you owe us, which is how it's been in the past and without knowing it. A lot of, a lot of different issues, but those are the main ones. A lot of issues with others in other jurisdictions where Excel and the one percent fund omitted, like, huge line items like materials, and then said, oops, and then, and then said, here's eight hundred thousand dollar miss, right? And that could have been caught if they had been transparent and we had been knowing upfront what they're doing. So that, this should at least solve those kinds of problems and give us an idea about, at least some basic idea of what they're, what they're allocating to their line items for the undergrounding project. So we're making some progress that, that has been on an issue that nobody's paid attention to for a long, long time. And we'll, we'll get back, and we want to report on that, but we certainly will have. And they also said that they have now hired one FTE who will do nothing but kind of focus on this, these projects. We also explained to them our concern about them having personnel turnover for all the time. Every time we meet with them, they have new personnel, and so, you know, they understand, and, you know, that hopefully will be addressed somewhat by this new FTE who will be focused on undergrounding, and we'll see. So it's good, it's all good. It was a very good meeting. Excel was very, you know, very good in coming kind of into a middle ground about, at least for now, and see how it works, and see what, see what it brings us. We had the mayors, managers, and commissioners meeting, attended with Chris, with our city manager Kramer. The focus of that meeting was almost entirely on the Arapahoe County Health Department, which was very interesting. I mean, the way they're, they're now getting up to speed to provide the services that had been provided by Tri-County. It's, it's complicated process. I mean, they're having to hire a lot of people. Fortunately, they have a lot of people who were working for Tri-County, they persuaded to come and work with them, and so it'll be ready to, on January first, flip a button and be the Arapahoe County Health Department and, and provide all the services that are required by state statute. There interestingly are not a lot. The mandates from the states, from the state are not that many. A lot of the programs that the, that the health department does are really kind of services, but they're not really mandated, mandated by the state. So complying with the state mandate should be okay, but they're going to have challenges in hiring lots of nurses, staffing up, I mean, all kinds. So they're, and we told them, we're supporting you, and, and, you know, tell us what we can do if there's anything. They're applying for, a lot of their money comes from grants, surprisingly amount. I mean, I, I hadn't realized that, but it comes from grants and things that they have to apply for. I think they said ninety different funding sources, which, if you think about, it's amazing, ninety different revenue streams coming in, and they have to apply for grants and do that. And we said, basically, the mayor said, as a group, hey, you know, if we can support you, write letters, support you, please let us know, because we'd like to, you know, what you're doing is really important. So that was a good meeting. They have a lot of work to do. And finally, on the thirtieth of August, there'll be an open house at Inwood High School to take public input on Hamden. So I'm on the Citizens Advisory Committee for that, but that's, we all should go, and we really should have a good turnout there and tell them what we, you know, what's important to us, because they have, and I've raised the issue, and they've identified that cut-through traffic is an issue for Cherry Hills, and they, they know it through their studies that they've done. They can tell the time of day, when the traffic is bad, and they can see the traffic going off of Hamden onto Coral Boulevard and through our community. So it's the thirtieth of August at Inwood High School, and I think it's at four o'clock. Four to seven. That's my report.
No report. No report. Last week, Laura ran a meeting to inform candidates, and I just want to, Kitty and I attended, made some comments. I just want to thank our city manager and all the directors for contributing very well to that. I thought people walked out well informed, and so, good job. Thank you.
Couple of quick updates. Dr. Cog, I've mentioned before that we had problems with greenhouse gas. They have worked and worked and reworked the models again, and have us as an area now compliant with the goals. The big changes were smarter traffic lights, more networked, the Complete Streets program, some bus rapid transit corridors, and some bike and pedestrian facility improvements. The, there's also work being done on Santa Fei up and down in the planning realm. Street, subway, shit, come on. One more time. The sidewalk connectivity is, is the key there. You've got places where there's like a bus station and no sidewalk to it, you know, and so they're, they're working through things like that, or places where there's not connectivity and there is no bus station. All the way up and down from Alameda to C four seventy is, is being reviewed. RTD, they, they went through a study looking out to twenty fifty, and basically have said, you know, if we look backwards, we were operating in an unsustainable manner, and we've got to change that. So they're working through just what that means, exploring debreusing as a possibility on the revenue side, looking at various fair scenarios and whether to, you know, how to, how to rearrange the routes and that. Moving on from transportation related to ballot initiative, I think I, maybe I can squeak under the wire here, you know, a little bit of city time, I suppose, but-
Regarding the issue that was just referred?
An update. Are we-
Well, I think, no.
Not anymore. No, I think, no.
No update.
Thank you for checking in.
Thank you. Okay. All right. That's all I have. Oh, one other thing. There is a neighborhood party at Cherry Hills Farm coming up on Saturday, four to seven, I believe, and I've asked the HOA president if he would, you know, open it up for mayor and city council members, and quick as I get a reply, I'll let you know, but I thought you might want to keep, if you have the time available, might want to make note of that. Thanks.
Will you keep the noise below the fifty-five decibels?
We'll try.
City Attorney.
I will let the directors go first. Pat, you want to start us off?
No report. To let council know, you may be aware that the city is in our process, as required by the charter, to go out for our RFP for engineering services. We did that this summer. That RFP closed last Friday. We did get five responses to those proposals, and so we are very encouraged by that. We're currently going through the process to decide which one or ones we may want to ask to come in for an interview.
We finally started seeing some movement from Zayo on Quincy, but that movement was slowed up with the weather the last two days, so as soon as Zayo gets their facilities off the poles, Excel will be in to take those poles down. At the same time, they're taking the poles down for the Hudson project and finally get to doing some cleanup work on Quincy and getting that prepared so they can seed that and get that ready for the winter.
Just a quick question on that. So the city's going to be responsible for some kind of reclamation, reseeding project in there, is that right?
Excel will do that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excel is part of our, part of the contract that we signed to do that. But to be clear, the owners on the other side of the fence are responsible for the maintenance of that area on an ongoing basis, is that correct?
No, that, that is on improved right-of-way. The city still maintains that portion of the Quincy right-of-way between the fences and the, and the driven road on the north side.
Oh, I thought we, I thought we decided, you know, when there were trees down from the Big Snow Spring snowstorm, I thought that was all on the owners to go-
Only in the improved areas. Any area that's been improved within Quincy, Colorado, Holly, once it's improved, it's the homeowner's responsibility. If it's unimproved, no irrigation, trees that were planted years ago by the city, the city still maintains it. As soon as a homeowner comes in there, which a few have on the north side, and put irrigation in, plant more trees, it becomes their responsibility.
Okay, and that is just for a couple, maybe four or five streets?
Yes, that's for the city.
Not all the, not all the locals?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
That's all I have.
Finance and administration had some very productive twenty-twenty-three budget meetings with city manager, so we're moving through that process. We are waiting for a couple of revenue estimates. One will be the highway users' tax fund, and then at the end of this month, we hope to get the Arapahoe County's assessed value preliminary estimate, so that's going to be interesting. Other than that, very routine.
Is that, is that estimate then, is this the second year, so is that going to be this?
Which, which estimate?
For the property tax estimate.
It should be at the end of August from the county.
But is that, there hasn't been a, when was the last assessment done?
Oh, it's not a revaluation year.
Right, okay, so it should be, we should be the same, same ballpark as last year.
Roughly the same, yes.
I have a relatively short list tonight. Just a couple of items. For the event on the thirtieth, the Hamden Avenue Safety Study, I would highly encourage as many council people and residents to attend that meeting. The more voice that we have in that, the better it is for our chances of getting effective goals and action items, like we discussed in the study session, into that plan that are actionable and therefore eligible for tip funding. So our voice is critical. With that said, if you do plan on attending, can you please RSVP with Laura so that if we do get, that is city business. So if we do get three or more council people intending to attend, we will need to notice that. So if you could RSVP with Laura, I would appreciate it.
And there's no problem with noticing, that'd be great. More the better.
Yeah, you bet. If you're really curious of what they're up to, please go. Yeah. There we go. The other thing, there were questions tonight, or there was a discussion regarding updates by the county and the health department, trying to establish the health department as of January one, two thousand twenty-three. I think there is interest. I've had a couple of council people ask me about progress on that as we go along. That is why we have invited them on September sixth. We are going to have Michelle Halsted and Commissioner Warren Gully to come present regarding a variety of county issues, but that will be the first and heftiest topic. I think they're also going to discuss the establishment of the eighteenth judicial district. I think they have a little bit of union news as well. You know, remember, the legislature authorized certain union activities for county governments, so they will have to work through that process as laid out by the state legislature. So there's going to be a series of updates from the county on the sixth. I would encourage you in the packet, I believe they are going to be providing some information as a heads-up about their topics. I know council's concerned or at least interested in those topics. Read that ahead of time so you can come with your well-thought-out questions ahead of time. So with that said, those are the only updates I have, and staff is available if you have any other questions.
I'd just add to that, too, that I didn't mention, the Commissioner Sharp is, is going to be on the board of the health department, so she's a great asset and resource for us. Also Commissioner Jacobson, and so the two Nancys will be on the board next year of the initial, initial board for the health, Arapahoe County Health Department, which, which is terrific. I mean, they're great dedicated civil servants, and their knowledge is going to be invaluable. City Attorney, City Clerk?
Candidate packets are due by August twenty-ninth. We have received several, and we'll be doing a lot draw at the September sixth meeting.
City Attorney, nothing? All right. Next item on the agenda is an executive session, but I will need a motion. Now, I guess the question for council members, too, is whether we want to keep, continue here, whether we should adjourn after that, or whether there's any interest in coming back after that session. Do you have any thoughts, City Manager?
I do. I do think there's a possibility that council may have direction for staff coming out of that. So if that is a possibility, the city manager's going to require, request that we keep the meeting open until we come back. Okay?
Yeah, I'd like to do that.
I'll take a motion then.
I move we go to executive session.
Pursuant to CRS Section twenty-four dash six dash four zero two four A, for the purpose of discussing matters related to the sale of city-owned real property, and pursuant to CRS Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, four zero two four E, to develop strategy for negotiations and to instruct negotiators relating to possible sale of such real property.
Motion, yes. Motion in a second, and we need to take a roll call on this.
Counselor Will?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
Okay, we will be in recess then. We are not adjourned, but we will be in a brief, in a recess for executive session, and we may come back.
I have one question about the sales tax. Do you mean, how many votes, what percentage of votes do you have together, fifty or more, fifty plus one or more? Just to make sure I get the letters lying in the issue. Okay. Okay.
Yep.